I just wanted somebody to mention this to you. I was like, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out the same thing.
Welcome to the January 9th, 2023 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Pajali, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Praise be to God. Lord, thank you for another day of life. Please give us the strength, courage, and wisdom to make good decisions for the citizens of Sandusky. Help us to be most respectful to all of our colleagues around the table and those attending the meeting this evening. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Byers, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meiner, Mr. Poole.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Pajali.
Here.
Mr. Wantington.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Myers?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Not objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of December 21st, 2022? That seems like forever ago, doesn't it? What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wanting.
I move that we accept the minutes of the December 21st meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Not objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, share with us your name and address and your agenda item comment.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'd like to talk about an item on the budget, and that's the transit financials. I started asking some questions, and the more questions I asked, the worse it got. So I need to bring this to your attention. The budget is $3.8 million for the transit. In 2022, they were $700,000 in the red. That's not sustainable. The last eight years, it's been in the red, all eight years. I don't know, maybe even before eight years, but we can at least go back eight years. Seven out of 10 riders go out of the city, out on 250 for jobs and for shopping, boosting the economy out there. The ridership has increased 50%. Gas hasn't increased $100,000 for gasoline, a little over 100,000. The revenue for the buses come from state and federal grants, but you can't always rely on those grants. The Ohio Department of Transportation picks up 50% of operating expenses and 80% maintenance expenses, and the city picks up the rest of it. There's user contracts also for revenue. There are seven contracts signed with people who use the service, and there are six more contracts being negotiated. Now, I'm told that there's cuts coming. There were six lines, they're going down to five lines. They're reducing hours, and that should save about $300,000, but you're still reducing those lines. As a wrap-up, I was over to the county after I discovered all of this, and I paid a visit to them over there. They're in the process of doing their budget. And when they do their budget, it's all transparency, it's all out in the open for the public to attend and make comments. So I took advantage of that, and I went over there, and I gave them these statistics. I think they were a little bit surprised, but I don't think they were happy that a resident came over there to talk to them about it. And so, that's another thing. But anyways, I think, and I'd like to suggest this, since they're in the process of doing their budget over there, that, and that's next Thursday, is one another session, next Thursday, January 12th at 9:30. I suggest that Ms. Reader takes her manager from the transit system, and they both go over there and present their case, take their facts and figures over there and present their case to the county commissioners. At least have enough respect for those county commissioners to show up in person and present your case about this, instead of hearing it from a resident. I think probably it's just a matter of asking them for a contribution. Now, I'm hearing that, well, they might do like, maybe interested in doing a shelter or seating, or maybe looking for a grant. We need something more substantial than that. We need a yearly contribution from them. They gave $125,000 to a nonprofit, Greater Sandusky, and never blinked one eye about it, but they can't give one penny to this transit system. Whatever happened to the regional partnership? Perkins is the same way. City ought to go over there during their commission meeting and present themselves. You don't do this by phone, you don't send a liaison over there, you go in person to show that you're serious enough about this and how serious this is. We cannot be picking up a tab of $700,000. And I want you to think about that. That's next Thursday, January 12th at 9:30. It would be a good idea to go over there and do that. I did it, you guys can do it. Give them enough respect not to hear this from a resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Greetings, everyone. Tom LaMarche, 20648 Street. I'm here to comment about the liquor license transfer to, what do they call themselves, Halo Incorporated, on 805 Wayne Street. My concern is that that is a heavy residential area with a group home across the street. I don't understand why we're putting a liquor license in the middle of a residential area like that. It'd be kind of akin to putting a new liquor license back into an East Adams Street or a West Adams Street location inside of a home, and then allowing them to turn it into a bar or nightclub. You know, when Halo was first put into the church building, it was supposed to be a recording studio, and now it's continued to evolve into a mini nightclub entertainment facility. There's a serious lack of parking in that area for that type of venue, and I just question why that's being permitted. I certainly wouldn't want it in my neighborhood. I don't think that you'd like it at Cedar Point, on Cedar Point Road, or McKinley Street, what have you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LaMarche.
Thank you, Mr. President, City Commission. I have a couple of questions. First one is to follow up on Mr. LaMarche on item A, would be just to ask what the process was for them to apply for a liquor license. I assume the city manager would have the answer to that, or maybe the police department. You know, were the neighbors notified? Is there a footage like 300 feet away, 300 yards away, that people get notified of this liquor license? Number two would be, is the property owner actually the applicant, or is the business that is running that facility, are they the applicant? And the question also would be, is the alcohol, the consumption of alcohol, it does state, you know, on the premises, including outside of the premises, so I assume that they're not inside the dora, so they would not be able to, you know, have a party in the street. So the question would be, is where is the alcohol confined to, inside, outside, et cetera? There was a concern also on social media, gotta love social media, again, what Mr. LaMarche said about the MRDD housing near that, very near to that location. So I don't know if they were, I guess the question would be, were they notified of this liquor license? The other item would be item number C, which is the Erie County Lead Paint Abatement, $95,000. I noticed the county's here tonight. I think last year, some of that money was actually used to tear down a house. So is there a commitment this year of the $95,000 actually going to residents to help clean up their lead-based paint? Or are we going to be demolishing houses again? Would also like to know what the process was used to take the public hearing off of tonight's agenda. It took a vote of city commissioners to put it on the agenda, and it looks like, according to the Morning Journal, that the president of commission decided to take that off on his own, and I would think that that would take a required vote of the city commission to take that back off the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwager. Any additional comments from the residents regarding agenda items? If not, commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Lot of discussion. Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have three items on our consent agenda this evening. I will remind you that we have a couple of questions regarding a couple items on the consent agenda. You can either choose to remove them, and we can discuss that, or we can certainly discuss that and allow them to remain on the consent agenda. Do any of you wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
We only have a total of six things for the whole night, so take A and B down, just because there's so much conversation about it, so we have.
A and B will be moved to the regular agenda. Ms. Byers, you present the remaining item of the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Item C, Erie County Health Department Agreement for Lead Bait Paint Removal Program.
Commissioners, having heard that ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I make a motion to accept consent agenda item C, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted to present it to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take in effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Just if the individual from the county has anything to say about that comment about the house being torn down instead of the lead abatement, if there's a reason for it, if there's, if he doesn't have an answer, that's fine, if he doesn't know.
Mr. England, would you like to respond to that?
What was the question again?
The question that was posed from the podium, that lead abatement money was used to tear a house down as opposed to abating the lead. I have an answer for myself.
If you're referring to the CDBG funds, that, actually, it wasn't CDBG funds, those were Ohio Lead Safe Home Funds, and they were awarded to our department. And those funds that are associated with lead projects and teardowns were through our department, if I'm not mistaken. Now, there may have been other teardowns, but they weren't associated with us.
Hopefully, that answers the question that the gentleman posed. As far as I'm concerned, tearing houses down, if they needed to go, they needed to go.
If they've been condemned, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Byers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. We'll turn to our regular agenda, starting with item A.
There is a notice to legislative authority for a T-Rex transfer of a D1 beer-only on-premises consumption or in original sealed containers for carryout only until 1:00 a.m., and D2 wine and mixed beverages for on-premises consumption only or in original sealed containers for carryout until 1:00 a.m. Liquor permit T-Rex transfer from City Barbecue, Chagrin Boulevard, Beechwood, Ohio, to Halo Live LLC, 805 Wayne Street.
Commissioners, having heard this request for liquor permit transfer, how do you wish
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension under rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Orzak or Chief Oliver, perhaps one of you would be able to comment on the process that we go through. It's been my understanding that we have very little say in awarding of liquor permits, but we're being asked here to transfer, to either request a hearing or not request a hearing for a liquor permit transfer. Perhaps you can shed some light on the process for us.
I believe Mr. Heil addressed it the last meeting, but my understanding is that the T-Rex is for economic development. The Halo submitted a document to the state saying that this liquor permit transfer is going to create economic development for the city, and then this gets sent to the state, and then the state goes through the normal process of sending a notice to the city, seeing if there's any objections and if they want to have a hearing. So I believe, my understanding, and Mr. Heil can correct me if I'm wrong, that this will come back before the commission again.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak. Mr. Heil, I guess I would direct us to staff. I think that when we typically get these requests, we ask for input from staff. I noted no negative input regarding this transfer. Isn't that correct?
That's correct. And then one, Mr. Orzak's correct, one correction was, this is actually the second time this is coming back to the city. So this is, it previously came, and it was certified that there was potential economic development. The Division of Liquor Control controls the entire process for issuing permits. They provide the notices to any relevant parties that, under the law, are required to get a notice for the transfer or application of a liquor permit. The city's one of those parties. What you have before you is just the option to object, which would then cause a hearing to be scheduled. But again, we have no control over the granting or denial of a liquor permit. It's a state agency that determines whether or not Halo Live would get this liquor permit at this location.
Thank you, Mr. Heil. Comments or discussion, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I understand what the process is that we have to follow. The question on the table is whether or not putting a liquor permit, it seems to me anyway, putting a liquor permit in this neighborhood, does it create a problem? So the first question is to staff who find it doesn't have a problem with it, is, first of all, is there any neighbor, anybody from the neighborhood here at all, from that neighborhood on Wayne Street?
Yeah, I'm the owner.
Okay, I think I know what you, all right. And then I guess the next question to staff is, do the neighbors, are the neighbors aware that they'll be selling liquor next door? Staff?
I can answer that, Commissioner. Through you, Commissioner President, the rest of the board. We don't make any notifications. That's all through the Department of Commerce. Actually, I don't even get notified until right before I get the email from Ms. Myers that there's a transfer. I can tell you from the police department side of it, we don't have any documented incidents that would forbid this from happening. If we did, I would bring it to the commission's attention, and I would cite those cases, but we haven't had any issues with the business.
Okay.
Documented issues with the business.
At this point, my, and since it came to the table, I don't have a problem with neighborhood bars. We have them all over town. It's simple as that. We have for my entire lifetime. If they become a problem, question is, do we have the ability to do something about it? Halo, which I know, the answer is correct, you do. With regard to this particular location, there, as the chief says, he has no documentation indicate it's a problem. The programs that they put on at that location have been positive in terms of impact on the community, and there's, at this point, there's no reason at this point, because this will come back for more, to us again, I presume, to turn it down. So, and just to tell you, understand why I'm going to support this, because there's nothing on the table that indicates that they've ever been a problem as a business, and just because they sell beer, they sell, we sell beer all over town, and they should be treated exactly the same way. And so I don't have a problem with this.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with Mr. Poole, and I was going to ask the chief if he had had police calls from there, but I guess there's none, or it hasn't been an issue.
It hasn't been an issue, sir.
And relative to the owner, and I may be misguided here, but is that kind of a BYOB operation now?
Currently, it is.
Sir, if you'd step to the microphone and just identify yourself, so we've got something for the record. Tell us your name and address.
Sean Daly, 805 Wayne Street, Halo Live. It is currently, we do BYOB, correct, and that is a very difficult environment. I don't like it because you don't have control over who brings what, and it can't get out of control. Getting this actually holds us for accountability for what we do on our property. As the chief and several have said, the permit process dictates the footprint of where you can have alcohol for sale specifically on the property. There's, it will be all public, be publicly accessible to the city residents that they need to. But we're looking at, we're not going to have this a bar which can be opened at 11:00 in the morning and go to 2:00 in the morning. It is having a liquor license on premise to do events there, such as open mics, comedy nights, and some shows. We do have agreements with local areas with parking lots down the street. We just need to be better off at identifying those for those who come to attend our events. And since COVID, we haven't had much of a footprint at all as far as people knowing who we are. So developing that, I'm hoping to also work with the city about getting some proper signage of where, there's a lot of curb areas around in the neighborhood that are marked yellow, no parking, but there's no signage. So when there's snow on the ground, they can't see where they can park. And we've had a couple of things where I had to scoot some people out the door to get their car moved. But that's really about it. And if anyone here has any questions, feel free to contact me directly through the city or through our website, halo-live.us.
Yeah, the only reason I bring up the BYOB is if there is alcohol use on the premises now, and there hasn't been any problems.
Correct.
Obviously, you've done a good job of policing that, so I think that I don't have a problem with it. As far as the parking, that was all hashed out when the approval was given, and it was recognized that there was real high density as far as parking goes over there, but you managed to work some things out.
And we're still working things out. We're not against making changes to accommodate anything within the city, within the commission or any needs we have down there. But definitely looking forward to getting things rolling where it's, people are used to what is going on down there and not so jarring of an idea of a concert venue going in the middle of your neighborhood. It's really not that big, but it seems that way. Any other questions?
Comments or questions, Commissioner?
No, and I would also just like to add that, you know, I think one of the reasons why there probably hasn't been any issues thus far is even just in the few events that I've attended there, there's always been security at the door, keeping a watchful eye on not only who comes in, but what comes in and what goes out. So again, yeah, I don't see any issues with this moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Byers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
That liquor permit transfer is passed. Ms. Byers, you present item B, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2023 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wanting.
I move for this, adoption of this ordinance at second reading under suspension under full accordance with Section 14 city charter.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Is there a question regarding that item?
Yeah, not a question, just like, have a moment to discuss the things that Mrs. Yeah.
Johnson.
Mrs. Johnson brought up, referenced the transit. I also have additional, in addition to answering her questions, that I have additional thoughts about the budget. So I guess the first thing is, what's our feeling about dealing with the transit issue with the county? Is it time for us to go out and make pitch, or what do you want to do?
I would turn to our interim city manager, Mr. Orzak. Did he share with you what he shared with me earlier this morning regarding an outreach to the county?
Yeah, through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, and Ms. Johnson always sends some great suggestions. So I didn't feel that it was very professional for us to show up at a commission meeting and just come in and blindside the county commissioner. So I did reach out to Hank Soloway, who's the county administrator on Friday, and obviously he's aware of the transit from working here for a number of years. I share Ms. Johnson's and probably all of the commissioners' concerns. You know, we've been talking about reaching out to other municipalities for probably eight or 10 years that I've been attending meetings. And so, Mr. Soloway had notified me that the county commissioners, and I believe Mr. Pajali had spoke with them as well, at least that's what Hank said, and they're in support or would entertain us approaching them for some capital needs for the transit system. They did request that we contact Huron Township and Perkins Township as they're more beneficiary of our services. So I did meet with James Stacy, who's a transit administrator, and Jonathan Holliday, who's the director, and they intend on getting out there to schedule meetings prior to the end of the month, and then start those conversations with both Huron Township and Perkins Township officials. So that will take place, and we'll report back to the commission on any conversations that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Yes, with regard to the budget overall, I can start with the transit. The budget's complicated, and I want to thank Ms. Reader. She spent some time with me explaining things, and for all the things that I have, issues or concerns about, she had an explanation, and the issue is not about the fact that the numbers balance and they have, there's a reason for the things that are in here. It's a question of whether or not I'm satisfied with how the money is actually being spent. With regard to transit in general, it is great that we're now going to talk to the county to try to get them to provide some assistance in covering it, but the 2023 budget, $600,000 less than the 2022 actual. And so, I'm not supporting the concept that we cut back on the money we spend on transit. I don't have shelters at most of the stops. I recognize that ODOT sent us a little less money, and then I think there's been an adjustment to that, which really isn't the issue. The issue is that transit provides transportation to people, to jobs, from the city of Sandusky. It's true. I don't agree with Mrs. Johnson that it's such a terrible thing that we pay for it, especially since we keep the rates down at the golf course so that folks don't have to pay an extra 50 cents for a round of golf. So the concept of supporting transit when it takes people to jobs, which takes them off of the public, off of public assistance, which also provides us with income tax, some, not a lot, obviously, if you're doing, it may not be a lot of money, but the fact of the matter is, our community to grow has to have people want to move here, and part of moving here is being part of something where everybody is productive and working, is towards something worthwhile. It's like, you need good people to live here, and good people actually have jobs currently. We've got lots and lots of money to spend on grants and for many different businesses, different things, some of which are very good, some are just questionable, but the idea of cutting transit is not something I'm real comfortable with, even with the explanation that she gave to me. Additionally, I want to look at, I wasn't, I have some concerns about the reduction we did for, in fleet maintenance. We have, and I have a different background than folks here. I'm from the military, I had three military commands, and the service and the successful ability to do what they do is tied to the equipment that those folks use. We have had, we are down to, with all of these departments, all the vehicles we have, all the equipment that they take care of, we now have three mechanics doing that, down from five. We have been, we were reduced in July 2020 to four, and we've had only three since April. And as I look at the budget, there doesn't seem to be a bunch of extra money added, I think you added $5,000 to next year's budget. I don't think that's a, I'm not on board with that. going into detail about other issues where I think we need to be taking care of, building maintenance likewise, we have a lot of, a lot of buildings. Cutting back on building maintenance staff simply means, as it is with fleet staff, it means that they probably have just enough people to handle the emergencies that come up. Like when you get a flat tire, I gotta go, I gotta send two guys to fix flat tire for a police car if it happens, or wherever, or these kinds of things. And so what you lose out on is preventive maintenance. And when I look at the number of emergency purchases I bought on equipment that broke down, I say, wait a second. And this again is my background. If you don't change the oil, yes, you can drive a lot of miles before it finally dies. And that applies to greasing and all the other things that they're supposed to do. And it's easy to look out, find out data-wise where we stand on that. And I just, off the top of my head, don't see the ability to run this machine effectively with three mechanics, any more than I was, thought we did well with, with short, three firefighters. So that's where I'm at. And so until those things are fixed, and I don't think we have to do this budget today. We have until March. Oh, one last thing, the water department, water. And I think it impacts, I feel it impacts this, and I didn't mention, did not talk to this with you. Until we've got a deal with Erie County on water, I don't think I know how much water, how much money we're going to have. Simple as that, don't know. And definitely not interested, well, let's leave it at that. And so I'm just not prepared to approve this budget as it sits until I'm certain that for certain transit, fleet, building maintenance, those departments are gonna, that they're going to be able to provide the service that I think the community should have.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I want to echo Mr. Poole's thoughts about the importance of transit. We can debate reasonably and I think respectfully about where the appropriate level of support is for it. But transit is like many other services that we provide, whether it's parks, or roads, or lighting, or whatever it is. It's an expenditure that's well worth it. And we've debated it at this table for many, many years, as Mr. Orzak points out. I think we do need to trim the budget a little bit, as has been proposed, in order to be able to make this work. We've had many discussions with the county over the years. I think the suggestion that we talk with Perkins and Huron Township is a good one. And I think that Mr. Orzak's approach of reaching out to them and scheduling a meeting instead of simply showing up for a meeting is the most appropriate way to proceed. And I'm looking forward to the results of those conversations. It is a great service. Sandusky Transit is really Erie County Transit in many, many ways. But it's so important for our residents. It's also important for the businesses in Huron Township and Perkins Township in particular. So I just wanted to offer my support for transit. I don't know the answers to the questions regarding reductions in fleet maintenance. I don't know if there is someone who is either here or participating with the ability to address why it is that those changes may be appropriate. So if there is someone, I would be happy to hear that.
Yeah, Mr. President, I can address that.
Mr. Orzak?
Through you, President. So fleet maintenance has had four people budgeted the entire year of 2022. They still have four budgeted positions in 2023. The issue and cause of not having four people there currently is because we can't get any applicants to apply. We just had HR reach out to some other jurisdictions, and everyone seems to be having the same problem. I've met with Troy and both of the mechanics towards the end of the year and wondering if they have any suggestions or they're hearing anything on how we can attract to get another mechanic. And it just seems to be, everyone's position is that it's the trade. They said every body shop or every mechanic's location, car dealership is down mechanics. And we've reached out to, you know, Tara and Tara E. Hovey, Lorraine Community College, all of those locations we've advertised. We had it posted. We, you know, sent it out again. So it's not a, that we're not trying to staff it. We're just having very difficult time staffing it. We did have interviews and made conditional offers to two folks last year, and they said they were going to come, and then they didn't come. So it's just a, I think, a trade issue. But we're going to continue on that path of trying to fill those position, or that position. We agree with Mr. Poole. We need to have that department staff.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins.
I would agree with Mr. Murray and his comments on transit. I think you'd be hard pressed to find a transit operation in the entire country that makes any money. And I think they probably all need a subsidy to stay alive. I think maybe the only approach that might work is if we had some sort of a regional effort where we got everybody around a table and to see if we could get some buy-in. And that includes the business community because they may be able to offer some financing for transit. But short of that, it's going to be difficult to, to fill that gap that we have right now.
Additional comments, Commissioner? I share most of, most of all of your sentiments regarding transit. My concern is that getting buy-in, and I'm glad we're reaching out to the county and we'll be reaching out to the townships also. My concern is that human nature being what it is, it may well take some type of a calamity to get buy-in from other communities, monetary buy-in from other communities. I'm not advocating that. But I think sometimes you don't appreciate what you have until you're about to lose it. I don't think it's fair to all of those good people that use transit to immediately pull the plug on them because the business out in Huron Township or Perkins Township is not willing to support, support this system. But the reality is, we're not going to continue. We cannot continue to fund this on our own. It just is not sustainable. So our efforts to twist arms, or make our case, or lay the groundwork for contributions to this, whether it's a regional effort, as Mr. Pajali suggests, or whether it's, you know, those businesses and those townships and municipalities seeing the benefit of it, we have to move forward on that. Because $700,000 out of this budget, it is a disservice. As much as it is a service to have transit in this community, is a disservice to the residents footing the bill for it, for people that are not benefiting, that are not in our community. So I appreciate the effort that we're making to move forward. And let's, if you can provide us with an update on this, say, on a, on a two or three week, or maybe a monthly notice, let's keep it on the front burner instead of letting it move to the back burner. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Mr. Barris, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Barris, you present item number one on the regular agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an exclusive right to sell agreement with Russell Real Estate Services of Sandusky, Ohio, for the marketing and sale of a portion of parcel number 56-00983, located at the southeast corner of East Market Street and Warren, formerly part of Sandusky Cabinet's property, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wanting.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Barris, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady? Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Barris, you present item number two, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the East Monroe Street resurfacing project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'm not really quite sure which project will be more appreciated by the public, Monroe Street or Perkins App, but this one is overdue and very welcome.
Agreed. Mr. Klein, only two things I want to know about this is, when are they going to start? And when are they going to finish?
Commissioner President, I will let you know as soon as we have that pre-con meeting. We'll be back here, we'll put it in the manager, manager's report, and we'll let you know when they're going to show up. Hopefully, it's one of the first projects out of the gate, which is you, probably around April.
So spring?
Yes.
Spring, early summer, we'll finish in it.
Being resurfacing, yes. Remember, too, that as part of correcting the drainage concerns at Decatur, we need to get some storm work done at Central Park before this project starts. So we're going to, we're going to be on a tight timeframe for that project. So hopefully, as quickly as possible.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Mr. Barris, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Barris, you present item number three, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Miller Cable Company of Greensprings, Ohio, for the Healthy Hayes Safety Improvements Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of our city's charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Barris, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Barris, you present item number four, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a second amendment to the agreement for professional design services with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the Mills Street High Rate Treatment Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, this number would blow me away if it, if I didn't look at the next item we're going to talk about and find out that this is a $30 million project. So I trust that you're confident that these engineering fees are in line?
Yes, Mr. President. Both of these projects, we spent a year and a half trying our hardest to make sure that we could keep costs in line as much as we possibly could while still meeting the intent of reducing the overflows in the general plan through the EPA. So unfortunately, when you do a project like this, the costs do get up there. But this is something that we have no choice but to do, both of these projects. And we will be coming back at future commission meetings. You see, within the second one, you know, the first project with Stan Tech, the UV disinfection, the replacement of that system, we will be coming back for permission to bid the replacement of the UV system that we were informed that they no longer will be making parts for.
And there's a cost sharing in both of these projects with the county of almost 14% and a little over 46%?
Yes, and we are still in the process of working through the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund to get a low-interest loan through them. That's better than the OWDA, both of them through Ohio EPA, but this one, usually you get a lot better. We're also anticipating getting principal forgiveness on this. We haven't been officially announced on that, but we're hoping to get principal forgiveness as well as low interest and maybe some credits due to generators and other things like that. So in the end, we're doing the best we can in keeping the costs and getting those low-interest rates as good as possible. And we will come back to the commission and present those exact rates once we know what they are. But being that we're coupling this project with the UV disinfection project so that we can get that low rate across both projects, we can't know exactly what it is until we bid that project out and get the final cost for that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I would simply note, with respect to this particular piece of legislation, how essential it is that we have contract administration services to make sure that the project goes as it is supposed to. It is a significant dollar amount that we are spending and there, and a significant amount of work that we're undertaking. And it's only prudent that we have an engineer overseeing this to make sure that it's done according to specifications and any legal requirements that apply. I know that the next, kind of, I'm going to take just a little liberty and speak to the next issue as well. I know that $33 million, that is an enormous contract. I don't remember if we have ever approved a larger contract. I don't think so. I don't recall it if we have. But, you know, this is the, this is the nature of municipal government. We, we are all here for a period of time, and we are stewards of the work that we are doing, or the assets that we're protecting, including the environment, for the period of time that we are here. And then we move on. And these assets that we put in place, these systems that we put in place, are meant to serve generations to come. And so this is a really good example of that, where long before most of us were on the commission, and I think this goes back, Mr. Klein, I think this, the negotiation of the general plan with the EPA goes back to, you have it in your memo, to 2012 and 2015. So a number of us were here, but some of us weren't. Mr. Klein has been one of the constants throughout this period, and for that, I'm very grateful. But this is a deal we struck with the EPA under consent decree. It's an order. We don't have choices about doing this work. And we want to do this work. We want to do this work because our economy and the, and the quality of life
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Great Lake Construction Company of Hinckley, Ohio for the Mill Street High Rate Treatment Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, this number would blow me away if I didn't look at the next item we're going to talk about and find out that this is a $30 million project. So I trust that you're confident that these engineering fees are in line?
Yes, Mr. President. Both of these projects, we spent a year and a half trying our hardest to make sure that we could keep costs in line as much as we possibly could while still meeting the intent of reducing the overflows in the general plan through the EPA. So unfortunately, when you do a project like this, the costs do get up there. But this is something that we have no choice but to do, both of these projects. And we will be coming back at future commission meetings. You see, within the second one, you know, the first project with Stan Tech, the UV disinfection, the replacement of that system, we will be coming back for permission to bid the replacement of the UV system that we were informed that they no longer will be making parts for.
There's a cost sharing in both of these projects with the county of almost 14% and a little over 46%?
Yes, and we are still in the process of working through the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund to get a low-interest loan through them. That's better than the OWDA, both of them through Ohio EPA, but this one, usually you get a lot better. We're also anticipating getting principal forgiveness on this. We haven't been officially announced on that, but we're hoping to get principal forgiveness as well as low interest and maybe some credits due to generators and other things like that. So in the end, we're doing the best we can in keeping the costs and getting those low-interest rates as good as possible. And we will come back to the commission and present those exact rates once we know what they are. But being that we're coupling this project with the UV disinfection project so that we can get that low rate across both projects, we can't know exactly what it is until we bid that project out and get the final cost for that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I would simply note, with respect to this particular piece of legislation, how essential it is that we have contract administration services to make sure that the project goes as it is supposed to. It is a significant dollar amount that we are spending and a significant amount of work that we're undertaking. And it's only prudent that we have an engineer overseeing this to make sure that it's done according to specifications and any legal requirements that apply. I know that the next, kind of, I'm going to take just a little liberty and speak to the next issue as well. I know that $33 million, that is an enormous contract. I don't remember if we have ever approved a larger contract. I don't think so. I don't recall it if we have. But, you know, this is the nature of municipal government. We are all here for a period of time, and we are stewards of the work that we are doing or the assets that we're protecting, including the environment, for the period of time that we are here. And then we move on. And these assets that we put in place, these systems that we put in place, are meant to serve generations to come. And so this is a really good example of that, where long before most of us were on the commission, and I think this goes back, Mr. Klein, I think this, the negotiation of the general plan with the EPA goes back to, you have it in your memo, to 2012 and 2015. So a number of us were here, but some of us weren't. Mr. Klein has been one of the constants throughout this period, and for that I'm very grateful. But this is a deal we struck with the EPA under consent decree. It's an order. We don't have choices about doing this work, and we want to do this work. We want to do this work because our economy and the quality of life that we have here is dependent upon quality water, healthy Lake Erie, healthy Sandusky Bay. And we are doing our part to fulfill the legal requirements and to protect the environment as we should. This will be paid for for many years, by generations to come, and hopefully the loan forgiveness that is out there and indicated kicks in in an appropriate way so that cities like ours, who have to make these substantial investments, are relieved. Because older cities like ours, cities like ours that are immediately on the water, have some greater expenses that some other communities don't have. But, you know, we all see the increases in the water and sewer bills. We don't want those to occur. We are not alone in Sandusky. We are not alone in Erie County. This is a nationwide issue. We have, as a nation, often neglected our water and sewer infrastructure. We're catching up with that. We cruised too long, and now we're paying what is an appropriate price, given what it is that we're required to maintain and do. So I'm appreciative of all the work that Mr. Klein and his department has put into this project. It is an enormous project, but it's one that I support because it's absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Mr. Murray.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Murray, if you could present item number five, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Murray, if you could present item number five, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Great Lake Construction Company of Hinckley, Ohio for the Mill Street High Rate Treatment Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Move for adoption of this ordinance under Section 14 of the City Charter. Suspension of the rules under Section 14.
Thought I lost it for a minute.
Yeah, I did for a second. Suspension of the rules under Section 14 of the City Charter, please.
I think there's been a motion, and I think I heard a second in there somewhere. Got a second in there. Discussion.
I don't think if you made Mr. Poole mention the dollar amount, he would have been able to get all the way through the motion.
That's the most money he's ever spent.
You're right, ever spent, yeah. Absolutely.
Mr. Murray, do you call a role on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed, Mr. Klein. I was thinking if we could find a way to pay for that on a credit card, I would like to get those miles. Probably go to jail for that.
I'll do the same.
That concludes our regular.
Can we get Capital One and give a percent and a half back?
I think you can. That concludes our regular. General, we'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I have a donation of $100 from Richard Woods for the Sandusky Police Department. If I can get a motion.
So moved. Second. And a motion and a second discussion. No objection, motion be approved, hearing no objection. The motion is approved. Our thanks, Mr. Woods.
And the second one is the city of Sandusky Rec Department would like to thank these businesses for providing lunch for the winter break camp, Lee's Famous Recipe, Barardie's Pizza House East, Bay Bell Restaurant, Sandusky Munchies, and Cindy Franketti.
I don't think we need a motion to accept that, do we? We can just say thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
Say thank you.
Police Department was recently awarded $11,760 through the Body worn Camera Grant Fund from OCJS. These funds will be used to purchase new body worn cameras for new officers. Public Works, Curbside Christmas Tree Collection started today and will occur in each zone throughout this week. Residents may also drop off their trees at the Shelby Street Boat, Launch Overflow Parking Lot, or the Quanis Parking Lot through the end of the day this Friday. Please refer to the cityofsandusky.com/Christmastrees or call 419-627-5884 for further information. The city is accepting qualification packages at the beginning of February for the redesign of Butler Street. Design and estimated construction timeline will be incorporated into the capital improvement plan. A final reminder that bag leaves can still be dropped off near the Marquette Drive entrance on the east side of the city service center until Friday, January 20th. For Sandusky Transit, a public hearing to discuss proposed service changes for the Sandusky Transit System fixed route lines was held on January 3rd at the Sandusky Library. Proposed service changes include consolidating the orange and yellow fixed route lines as well as introducing new service hours based upon the time of year. The changes are proposed to be effective February 1st, 2023. The proposed changes are expected to reduce operating costs by roughly 10% or $300,000 per year. The full list of changes is posted at sanduskytransit.com. For Rec, winter break camp was a huge success with 60 to 80 kids attending each day, participating in fun and educational activities. Yoga at the Greenhouse started January 4th from 5:30 to 6:30. Attendees can register for all sessions for $60 or do drop-in classes for $10 each. This will run Wednesdays in January and February. Tai Chi started January 4th at 11:00 a.m. at the Mylander Pavilion and will be Wednesdays in January and February. Thank you to Susan Lowell, Mental Health and Counseling Services, for her sponsorship of this program. Yoga on the Pier is back again for January and February. Class starts at 10:00 a.m. Thank you to Bay Shore Counseling Services for their sponsorship. Winter Out of School Program Registration is open. This is a free 12-week program. Doors open at 3:30 and it runs until 7:00 p.m. And lastly, the Midtown Supper Club starts January 9th. The theme this year is Midtown Supper Club Meets New Orleans. The chefs are all in place and ready to go. Sewing, dance, theater, and music programs will incorporate, along with the chefs, to make this a whole-themed performance and dinner on February 21st. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Doris. That, Commissioners, if you have any questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Doris, I could simply ask you to confirm that you provided us with some notice. Mr. Brady and me, as the president and vice president of the commission, you provide us with notice a little while back that we had made a mistake, an administrative mistake in terms of sending out notice regarding the proposed zoning change for the Battery Park area. And therefore, we could not have a hearing today because it had to be properly placed in the newspaper, I think 30 days in advance of the hearing. We made a mistake in that regard. I just wanted to ask you to confirm that.
Yeah, that's correct. Along with the other public hearing that we had scheduled for the transient rental overlay district on Washington Street, both of those were not posted properly, so we couldn't have either one of those tonight.
And so I think the follow-up question for the commission is whether, in light of the current situation, you want to reschedule that. I would urge that we don't. I would urge that we just let the process play out. There is a special election that's scheduled. And rather than deal with these issues now, let's see what people want to do, and we'll, if we still have that authority, we'll take that up in March, and we'll see how this proceeds. So I would recommend that we not take that up, we not reschedule it at this point in time, and just see how the process plays out.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray. Commissioner Poole.
I respectfully think that we should hold the hearing, and the reason we need to hold the hearing is so that folks understand what's going on with it. There'll be people that don't understand why we're changing the zoning, what's at stake, plus or minus. It only makes sense for us to clear that up. And if a public, it just only makes sense.
So if I understand you correctly, Mr. Poole, you're...
I think you should have a public hearing, so people could, if they have questions, they can come ask about it. We'll have no idea. Granted, we'll know what happens if you have a vote some point in time, but folks that have questions about what's on the ballot, what it's about, not the ballot, but the planning, the change in the zoning, all of that, we should have, should talk about it. Air, clean air covers, cures everything. People, I don't want people having a misunderstanding about what we did or why we did it.
Mr. Chairman.
That's what I think.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
Yeah, no, no, that's your good.
So my recommendation was that we not hold the hearings, simply because, given the fact that there's a public vote and what it is that we're proposing to do, or what it is that the developers, Marus, are proposing to do at Battery Park, has been very well set forth in great detail. I don't see where an additional hearing at this point would be anything other than an affront to the process. So I, Mr. Poole and I, look at it differently, but we, the Planning Commission has had a fulsome hearing about this. That's available. The documents are available for anybody who wishes to review them. The video is available for anyone who wishes to review that. There's been a presentation made with substantial documentation at this meeting as well, at our commission meetings. And I, we, Mr. Poole and I have a different perspective on that. I think proceeding with the planning with a hearing now would offend people, and I think it's better to wait. So that's just how I see it.
When I was advised of that, of the fact that we did not get a public notice out in the proper time, I was convinced that that was the right thing to do, was to cancel this public hearing for many of the reasons that Mr. Murray has just itemized. And I'm going to ask now for a motion to cancel that public hearing that was scheduled for January night. And I'm going to ask that it cover both the public hearings, both for the zoning map amendment and for the East Washington Street project also. I think I can combine both of those cancellations of those hearings into one motion. If I can have a second to that motion, we'll vote on that.
I'll second it.
And a motion and a second? Discussion.
I don't know what he's watching. Oh, transient rental? I don't think you can do those together.
Mr. How can I?
They're separate, they're separate issues.
Those we combine?
And I'm pretty sure that the charter says you have to do things individually. I may be wrong, because it's only talking about money, but in general, you don't get to have two separate issues on one vote.
So for a motion, a procedural motion like this, you could combine them if you want to?
Okay.
It might, if you're going to treat them similarly, if you're going to reschedule one of them, it might be easier to do them separately because they're two separate issues. You've been talking about the charter amendment regarding potential parks for the one, and the other is just a transient rental rezoning that wouldn't be, yes, I don't know. It's up to commission how you want to frame and form that motion. I didn't know if there was going to be a rescheduling of either of them, which, if they're not going to be on the same date, you'd have to do it by separate motions.
I find it easier, and I believe it's easier to combine the two. If I'm permitted to do that, I'll combine the two. And I think we have a motion, and we have a second for that. We're having a discussion on that now.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if we're going to change zoning for transient rentals, you're suggesting that the neighborhood, that we not give them opportunity to speak at a hearing about it? Is that what we're saying?
If I may, for some procedural, through the commission president, the canceling the hearings would just cancel both hearings for tonight. A new motion then would have to be to schedule those hearings in advance. Both require a 30-day notice provision to hold them so that those hearings would have to be scheduled at least more than 30 days out at a city commission meeting, in the future, at a meeting.
So to be clear, we're not denying anyone the ability to have a public hearing. We simply are canceling two public hearings that were not appropriately advertised in the correct amount of time.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
With the motions.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that motion because, in the confusion, people who may have wanted to come speak at the public hearing here today wouldn't be here. So for that reason, I have no problem separating, doing what you've asked with this motion. I do recognize, though, and it's still, it's all part, it's separate legally, but the reality is, we're planning to not do it at all. That I don't agree with, for the reasons that I stated. And I think you should have, you should have public meetings about spending that kind of money and doing, and the things that we're doing, it should be open. So fine, I will vote yes on this motion that's in front of us.
Mr. Murray, do you call a role on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Those public hearings are canceled. Under housekeeping, I need a motion to cancel, need a motion to schedule a public hearing for a vacation of a portion of Fremont Avenue right of way for February 13th commission meeting. So moved. Second. And a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Murray, do you call a role on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion, that public hearing is set for February 13. to, I guess, Mr. Heil, be to vote to rescind the grant, uh, or, and terminate that contract award.
Additional comments or questions?
Commissioner President, would you like me to answer that question?
Is there a question there for Mr.?
I was, I did indirectly ask Mr. Heil a question.
Um, that's correct. Uh, you could direct the city manager to exercise our option to rescind the economic, the grant that you mentioned.
I too viewed the correspondence that, that came, uh, just over the last week or so, and, um, two things I'm not happy about with, with it, and that was the start date, which indicated June of this year, uh, which was a departure from our meeting in November with the developer, who was going to start, uh, the project in 2022. The completion date was, uh, set to be the end of 2023. Um, counting backwards, for me, that would, that would mean that we've had this money tied up for almost four years. I don't think that's fair. Uh, I don't think that's fair to, uh, a lot of other businesses that perhaps could have made use of that, uh, those dollars. Uh, the, the second part, and probably the most important part, was I don't know that anyone could view the funding letter that was provided as, uh, a truly a commitment of funds. It was a letter that listed, I don't know, five or six additional items that the developer needed to provide to be considered, uh, a funding source. Um, I, again, I, uh, no one likes to, uh, throw a cold blanket over a project, but, uh, this is too long. I mean, this is, this has taken too long. Uh, we have an obligation to put those dollars to work somewhere in our community. Uh, this developer is certainly, uh, able to reapply at some point in the future, but, uh, gotta have, gotta have the ducks in a row, uh, in a little quicker timeframe than, than what we've seen so far.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris.
Uh, just for the public, is there an opportunity for, uh, anyone to, to speak? Uh, or is this not?
Nope. I, I don't, I don't believe I need to hear.
Okay.
A presentation. Additional commissioners? Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, just a question for, for the law director. Just want to be sure, this, this, these individuals have this, they have not met the requirements of the agreement that we had. Is that correct?
Um, that's my understanding, but I, I would direct you to the city manager, who's actually-
I just want to be sure that we legally are in right place in terms of if we can terminate this without any repercussions.
Mr. Poole, do we have the ability to rescind the grant?
Well, I know we have the ability to rescind the grant. I do have, are, are we in the right, are, I would like to rescind the grant if we have a just reason for doing it, which is he did not comply with what he was supposed to do to get it. We don't have to give him an extension. That's, I just want to be sure we're in the right, that I don't get sued later and find out we lost.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that during our meeting with the developer, we made it clear that if he didn't meet the requirements within a certain timeframe, that we were going to pull back the funding. So, that's, that's what's transpired. Now, I would defer to Mr. Holliday as far as what that agreement says. I think the developer, I, I, he's reached out to some local talent, and, and I believe in them, but, uh, the developer, I just didn't get a, a very strong feeling that he could accomplish this project. So, uh, he, he was well aware of what the ramifications would be, and the fact that he can come forward and, and apply once again down the road, if he can put everything together, I think, will help him in the future if he wants to move forward with the project. But, but I would want to ask Mr. Holliday, are we on strong ground?
Uh, Mr. President, to, to, Mr. Bajali, the grant agreement established a completion date. Uh, that completion date was not met. The grant agreement did stipulate that the city manager can extend the completion date. Uh, I think what I'm hearing today is that , uh, city commission is, um, considering advising the city manager to advise the developer that that completion date will not be extended. And I think if that's done, uh, yes, we are on solid ground.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
The solid ground part is what you wanted to hear?
Yeah, it's all that matters.
I have a motion to instruct the city manager to notify the developer that, uh, we will not be extending that, that, uh, completion date.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion is passed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session personnel, city manager.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Executive session is set.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Before we go, I wanted to make a comment to the, with regard to the manager's report. Um, Sunuska High School has an automotive program?
Yes.
And they do have a global program that takes, we, we could look to them to perhaps have a, an intern-type program to, uh, for our, for our fleet.
Troy's been in touch with that.
I want to say, I wanted you to look, take a look at that.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Good. Any, any, are there any public comments on any items pertaining to city business? Please step to the podium, identify yourself, and share with us your comments.
Sharon Johnson, I'm 39, Fifth Street. I just wanted to clarify something on this transit thing. I don't want to hear any excuses on this. For years and years, we've been kicking the can down the road. There's no excuse for a $700,000 overrun. Um, you have to get creative, you have to think out of the box, how to approach these people to pay up on and help us out here. Um, why I suggested that you go Thursday to meet with the county commissioners is that you get them all in one room, all three county commissioners, because of the open meetings law. All three of them need to know this all at once. There's nothing inappropriate about that. They want to hear from you. You can't do it on an individual basis. All the information has to flow to them all at once, so they can listen to it. Not through Hank or anybody else, them directly. That's what I wanted to clarify that on. Uh, that Market Street collective thing, I'm glad you rescinded the grant. We waited too long. We gave them so much time on that. So, um, and if they want to, they can always reapply, but to hold up money, 139,000 for four years is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Hi, Katie Karopkin, 634 Columbus Avenue. Um, I am here on behalf of the food hall that, um, is going into Cardinal Grocery Store. Um, I wish that we would have been given an opportunity to speak ahead of the vote. Commissioner Bajali, I do, um, appreciate your, your sentiment about local talent being brought in. Um, I'm very new to this project, so I can't speak to the, the length at which it's taken us to get to where we are. Uh, we are moving forward in a very positive direction, and I know that, um, you were asking for proof of funding, which we weren't able to give at this time because there were a few things that needed to come together. Um, you wanted proof of funding from the bank, and I know the proof of, of funding from the bank had to come after the extension. Um, it was a stipulation. Um, I can't speak too much on that, uh, but I would like to say that, um, the reason why the project has taken so long is because, um, the developer originally went into an agreement with an operating company that was not local. Um, things were drawn out, um, there were some disagreements, and in the end, uh, the developer decided to part ways with that management company and that operating company, which is why I was brought in. We have another local talent, um, as well, from the area. Um, and I've just been on this project for the last two months. So, like I said, I don't have all the information, I can't speak to everything, but, um, we are hoping to move this project in a more positive and expedient direction. Um, and we will be applying for, for a grant again, and, and I'm sorry that we weren't able to speak, and we weren't given notice that, um, this was going to be on the agenda tonight, but, um, thank you for your consideration for future grant applications that we will submit.
Thank you, Ms. Karopkin. Additional comments from the public on any item? Now, we'll move to executive session.
We have no one else here to call the roll. I will call the roll. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion is passed. We will send instructions to HR to forward all of the applications. Once we select, well, our next step will be to receive the RFPs, the Request for Proposals. We will make that decision at another executive session and we'll move forward from there.
We'll discuss them in an executive, Mr. President, we'll discuss them in executive session and to clarify, we will vote on it here at the table.
Exactly.
Public session. And I think an additional qualification is that we should make sure that we reach out to all existing applicants and let them know what the process is and this minor, whatever, this turn that we've taken.
We'll make that a job of HR and I'll advise them with that tomorrow. Further business, Commissioners. I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Adjourned.